Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, May 15th, 2006. We do have a quorum with all members present. Tonight, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the community development block for Athens. Mayor Abel, will you be handling it in person?
(inaudible)
Thank you. I'm Melissa Knight from the mayor's office downstairs. I handle most of the grants and the applications to the administration. The CDBG grant comes up every year and we try to have two public hearings. One prior to getting the project and the second after the project is acquired to permit any public comment. CDBG is our, it's a non-competitive. It's given to small cities. This year, we're up for $95,000. The program has been cut by the federal government for probably the last three years that I know of, but we dropped from 124,000 to 95,000 this year. And our Fair Housing program comes out of that money. There'll be $3,900 that goes for our Fair Housing program. Now, the people from Fair Housing were going to be here tonight. I haven't seen them yet, but I think they were supposed to be here, at least before 7:30. That will leave us approximately $90,100 left. Now, there'll be like a 15% admin out of that, but we'll probably have, I would say probably between 75 and 80,000 for construction. Now, this project can be anything, it is, it funds a wide range of activities. It's all handled in low and middle-income areas to benefit the entire city. A lot of it will include all the people from all those districts, like we have in the past. We did all the Court Street improvements with this. And at one point, I think it was right about the time that I came here in 99, we did the Elliott Street project, which was a water and sewer project down there. We've done the Court Street and we have gone the intersection down by Bromley Hall. Coming up that way, it's a three-way intersection. So, all those streetlights now match, all the traffic signals match. They're going to be synchronized at some time or another, hopefully. This year's project, which is just now getting started, is down at the water treatment plant in the West Eight Ballfields. All of our wells down there, the railings are unsafe. They are not approved by OSHA. There's also a brine lagoon inside the water treatment plant that needs railing put around it. OSHA says, you know, "You can't have a big open pit with a bunch of water in it." And I can't say, I don't blame them, but that is the project for this year. And making the ladders that go up to the top of the wells safer so that little kids can't climb the ladders. It's right down there in the ballfields. I don't know if anybody has been down there and seen them, but most of them are rusted, they're falling apart, they're unsafe for the people that get up on the plant, on the top of those wells to look at them. They're also unsafe for the kids that could possibly climb them. So, that's all going to be replaced with this year's. Now, the range of projects can be anywhere from streets, water, drainage, sewer, sidewalks, and curbs in city areas would be allowed. It's all to, in the low and moderate areas. We have three in our city. The west side, there's a section of Court Street that is also considered low and moderate income, which is where we have done our past efforts. And then, there's a section down off of Stimson Avenue. I'd have to show you the maps. I have them all downstairs if anybody wants to look at them, to show what areas are available to be repaired, to use this money in. Let's see. Generally, this is about the time that I ask for any citizen comment for anybody who has a project that they're interested in trying to fund with this kind of money.
We have an audience member, Mr. Spoffworth.
Okay.
Please come to the mic, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm John Spoffworth, 7th Brown. It is really nice to be back at council. I haven't been here for about a year or so. And to see Councilwoman Bojinka.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Flowers here. I'm gonna petition council to put as much of that $90,100 into repairing my backyard. The, I know this has been a contentious project, and I'm not gonna go on with it here. This is the first hearing, so I'm gonna leave a handout that explains. This is, the top one is for Gary Hunter, he was here, and the bottom one is for council. I'm sure you can make copies, and one for the mayor.
Okay, there's just two copies.
Basically, and very briefly, the water runoff has never, never been stopped from Miller Street, from the original Miller Street and back to my hillside. I have lost 45 feet of the flat yard space because the hillside now, mine and my neighbors adjacent, is an absolute landslide. There is information in the packet that explains some of the history of it, so I won't go into that, but I'm resolved to get this 22 years of continual ongoing water runoff stopped permanently and repairs made to my yard. This is, I don't think I'll say anymore because... It's very emotional, so I wish that you would consider, 'cause this is my home.
Thank you, Mr. Spoffworth. Is there anyone else wishing to address council on this issue? Melissa, anything else you wish to state?
No, really. Did anybody have any questions about the program?
Bojinka?
Well, this is not so much a question about the program, but this proposal on the water railings and these ladders and everything, how much would that be?
That's not a proposal, that's last year's project. That's what we're in the middle of right now.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
That is being bid and being done now. What we're having this hearing for is what will come out, I applied for this in July.
Okay.
It won't be funded, we won't know until probably September or October.
Okay, so you're getting citizen input.
And so, this will be, we're getting prepared for next year.
Yeah, okay, and here was input.
Yes.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, and the mayor gave me a copy, requested last week ago about the cost for the railings and stuff like that. The total bill is about, the total bid estimate is about 109,000. And that's for the bid, so we'll see if it comes. Has it been opened? Yes, it has.
Then how much did we get from the grant?
I think there's 90,000 in the grant project itself, and the city's putting in the rest.
Yeah, so the idea is to match the project that...
We try to match somewhat. I mean, the more you put in, the better off you are with CDBG.
Now, there was some discussion, I think from Debbie Phillips, about some of the Stimson Street infrastructure sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera, or is that...
Handicapped accessible?
That was an issue that was raised by the Disabilities Commission about a year ago. I think when we were talking about this, there was a discussion about dealing with the curbs and ramps on Stimson Avenue, but there's a lot of places where it's really hard for folks to travel the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's true.
So, that's another possible project that we could use CDBG funds for, and the Disabilities Commission had requested that we do everything we can to improve that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I have anything in writing on that or not, but I do remember hearing about it. I need to contact probably Ben Stolffus. He's the one who does most of our concrete work, and he can make the ADA ramps AD accessible.
Well, actually, the city's working on those right now, so I don't know how much more has to be done.
Okay, that I'm not, I'm really not in on that one.
Members of the Disabilities Commission walked the whole area with Andy Stone and kind of went point by point along there to point out the areas where there was something either blocking the sidewalk, or there are places where there are driveways and the curb kind of comes around and you can't get down the curb.
You're talking about Stimson?
All along Stimson. So, there, we did improve the ones by the new bank. Those have gone in, and I think that folks on the commission are really appreciative and think that, you know, it was a really good job. So, there just are additional issues, and I'm sure they have a record in the, from the meeting.
Yeah, I think Andy does, yeah.
Some of the other considerations, there was, and I know it doesn't sound like one of the zones that you can actually put infrastructure in, is the sidewalk on Columbus Road between Second and Sunset. I know, I just mentioned because it's been brought up and it's one of those often sidewalks.
Yeah, it is. That isn't an area that I would be allowed to use this kind of money in, but it is, I believe it has been brought up several times.
And John Spoffworth is the problem. I went out there a couple of years back, 'cause he's been, he's brought it up several times. And one of the considerations he's looking at is not so much clearing his backyard of this slumping dirt, but actually re-establishing a retaining wall on Miller, which is behind his place. As I say, he's called me a couple of times when it's raining to say, "Watch the water come down in days when it's not," so he can tell me what's going on. And I just mentioned, to reiterate, that is a problem up there. My advice to him was actually take the dirt out from his backyard, which would mean that the rest of the road would come down, and then that would be a problem that we'd deal with. But he's not, you know, he's not capable of moving all that dirt right now.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Knight?
So, I'm sorry, what happens next?
Bojinka?
Yeah, what happens next then, in regard to this grant?
Oh, the process? Right now, we'll just have to go over the projects, find out what's feasible, what's within our range to do.
And what has been proposed.
What has been, past efforts in that area, those kind of things. Then, we will develop the project and the budget for that project. And then, I will advertise and we'll come back for a second hearing prior to submission. So, you'll know what the project is and how much it's gonna cost and what it's going to be.
So, you're doing like a public request for...
This is to notify the public that if there's anybody who does have a project, that's why this is here.
Right.
Do you have any other projects that are...
At the moment, no. I can, in a way, because the amount of money is rather limiting. When you talk about $80,000 and you're building a sidewalk, that doesn't go very far. So, I mean, really, we wanna put the money to the best good that we can for the amount that we have. So, finding a project that is the right size and scope may be difficult at this point.
Melissa, to help pick up the two minutes before council starts, could you give us an idea of what the Fair Housing representatives were going to be passing out tonight?
I believe it was just basic, very basic information, and a lot of it had to do with predatory lending, which is, that's become a real big deal in the state of Ohio. I don't know why, but they are having...
Dominion Homes.
Yeah, they're having a training session on that here sometime either late May or early June for predatory lending. And Fair Housing, basically, the information was to get out their name, their phone number, that they are available. They can answer questions on anything from landlords and tenants to rent disputes. If they can't help them, they can at least tell them where to go and look. But that's basically, I believe, what they wanted to tell you. And as soon as I get the information from them, I'll make sure that everybody has that. It does make it nice, because you do have people that'll ask you, "Well, where do I go for a problem like this?" So, it does prevent handy to have that. And as soon as I have it, I will give it to you.
Are there any other questions at all for Ms. Knight or the mayor's office? Anyone from the audience wishing to ask a question? Thank you very much for coming to see us tonight. It is honor about 7:30 PM, and we do have a quorum with all members of council present. Disposition of minutes.
I move to accept the minutes of May 1st, 2006, regular session.
Motion and a second to accept the minutes of May 1st, 2006. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting of the minutes?
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes have been accepted. Communications?
I have communication. I'd like to read a letter. This is from the Visiting Nursery Association Hospice and Health Center. It's dated April 25th. I think I got it sometime in the last week, but I'm not sure, I just started looking for it. It's addressed to me. "As councilman of our ward, we implore you to bring this to the city, bring to you, the city council, concerns about the deplorable condition of Harold Avenue located on northwest Union Street and ending at the parking lot of our home health organization Appalachian Community Visiting Nurse Association Hospice and Healthcare Services. Several private residents and other businesses are located on this street, including Hoon Inc., warehousing for diagnostic hybrids, and state electric supply. We moved to 30 Harold Avenue June 20, 2001, watched the road continually deteriorate with repeat flooding, potholes, and dust. At some point, the road is not passable as a legitimate two-lane access, requiring traffic to pull over into private property or wait till the other vehicle has passed. Poorly engineered egress and ingress of Larry's Dog House drive-through at the mouth of the street has been a cause of several accidents, some without staff being involved. With 70 employees, the board trustees, advisory council, and various vendors, clients, and community volunteers who use our facilities, and visitors to our veterans and camaraderie - camaraderie, camaraderie, sorry - gardens, we wish to express our immediate need to address the inadequation of said roadway. Each year, nearly 100 community members attend two garden dedication ceremonies where they repeatedly voice concerns about their inability to drive safely to our facility. Needlessly, needless to say, their desire to invest in our garden is nullified by the area's poor condition. In addition of the addition of the passion works ceramic tiled benches brings many visitors who must also navigate the pitfalls of Harold Avenue. As director of development, I have brought the concerns of our organization to attention of other tenants and owners along this corridor. It seems clear the responsibility of the roadway rests directly with the city of Athens, and we ask that you will bring this very important matter to the attention of full council," which I'm doing, "and that attempt may be made soon to rectify the situation. The Appalachian Community Visiting Nurse Association celebrates 25 years of business in 2007 as the oldest provider of home health and hospice care in Athens in the five contiguous counties, as one of Athens' largest employees. We look forward to your early reply." It's signed by one, two, three, four, five. Basically, the president, Melinda Miller, various other people, and the board of trustee members. Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 13 members total, I mean, signatures. So, I bring you to the attention. I think we were discussing this at one point, whether this is right of way or not. I thought it was.
I know in the past, distant past, it runs in my mind that the city does not own the street all the way back there. Is that correct, Mayor Abel, to you? I hate to blindside you with this, but off the top of your head, do you remember?
The right of way does not extend to the visiting nurses. There are private driveway to their facility. I made a note to check the plat to see where exactly that is, but I believe Harold was the one that was discussed when the university brought forth a proposal to try, when they put the buildings in for their industrial technology park, that they wanted to do a connector link through that area, and that was the roadway they suggested that council did not concur.
I saw it's blicked.
There was, any of three.
Blue line, blick.
Blue line, blick, and Harold.
But we will take a look at it. I'm sure the administration has made a note about it.
Sounds like eligible for CDBG to me.
We can pass it along to Amy Flowers, the chair of the Streets Committee, and hopefully within a few weeks, at least get back to them on what we feel the city may be able to do on a timeframe with it, something like that, which won't be immediately.
We also received several letters about public smoking in public areas. I don't think I'll read them all, but the gist of it about secondhand smoke and trying to do something about the smoking.
And those were addressed to all members of council. Okay. I am in receipt of two liquor permit transfers. One is from Brad A. Wharton LLC located at 7 West Carpenter, being transferred to Bronies LLC of the same address. The other one is from Motor City Limited doing business as Evolutions at 19 South Court, being transferred to, I guess it's pronounced G File, I'm not sure, Foods LLC, also of the same address. What is it, Nancy? I'm not even repeating that.
I think that's what it is.
But both of them are remaining in the same place. It looks like a ownership change possibly. These will be with the clerk of council for anyone that would wish to review them and make known any objections to them. Are there...
Actually, I think I was going to ask at my meeting next week that we talk about it, because people in the third ward are certainly not happy with what's going on.
Very good.
It was the first one.
We will add that as an agenda item to your committee meeting next week then.
And the deadlines for this are June 12th for any response, so just so we know.
Very good. Are there other items of communication that anyone wishes to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Let's start with the law director. Gary Hunter?
No report, Mr. President.
Mayor Abel?
No report.
No report? Highly unusual. City Auditor Act.
No report.
No report. Nobody wants to report tonight, do they? That takes us to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 3706, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.13, Clean Indoor Air, introduced by all members of council. Member Wild?
I move adoption of 03706. This is amending the Clean Indoor Air Act, Chapter 3, 9.13. This is essentially establishing labeling and signage for the hookah bars. We have two of them present right now. We had put this through with a font of 26, I believe, and we've gone up to, do you remember the font size we ended up with? We amended this and...
You amended it to minimum, I think, is 48.
Minimum 48. So, this will be coming into effect. The concept there is that we want to label tobacco use in its, in all states, in all states of tobacco or delivery, or whatever they call it.
In all forms.
Forms, yes.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3706. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4506, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Member Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4506. This is an ordinance which will allow the service safety director to do the street paving repairs, of which council experienced when we were out on the street tour, and that is the $125,000, which is actually less than last year.
Well, that's shortened to the point. Any comments? Member Wild?
I guess we missed Harold on our trip.
Other comments?
Well, just again reminding the public that there was a great deal of grant money that went along with these things, and so the, that's partly why the actual amount out of the street fund is lower this year.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4506?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4606, an ordinance authorizing engineering of the East State Street bike path extension from Cook Drive towards Stroud's Run Drive. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4606.
Second.
This is an ordinance which will allow for the engineering and environmental review and project bidding on this project. For some more background, we have approved $537,600 in grants, and we still have outstanding application for $164,550 for the Clean Ohio Trails Fund grant, with a total project cost of $757,000, with a local match of $54,850. So, certainly a worthwhile project.
Further discussion on ordinance 46. Member Sands?
Just a question, Member Flowers. This says, the bike path extension from Cook Drive towards Stroud's Run Drive, but this is actually on the, what, the south side of East State Street?
Yes.
It is. Okay, rather than crossing East State Street at the terminus where it is now?
Right, there would be a connector path at Hope Drive, which we put, the plan right now is to put some warning lights and signage in at that, and then there potentially would be one at Delaware Drive. But we did receive approval from the state and then federal highway that we could use the limited access through the interchange area of Route 50 and 32.
Mayor, how much of an extension is this for 750,000? Is it a mile?
It was on the...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Close to a mile.
Close to a mile?
It's 5,900 new feet of bike path.
Over a mile.
More than a mile.
I was just curious what...
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4606?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4906, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4906.
Second.
This is an ordinance that was introduced several weeks ago, and it's actually appropriating funds, appropriating money in several funds. It's to complete the work of the interfund transfer ordinance, which we adopted on March 6th. Normally, the interfund transfer ordinance is something we do at the very end of a previous year. Somehow, we missed that this year, and so it's taken us several steps to get it all completed, just to complete that process.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4906?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5006, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $435,000 of water system revenue notes, ninth 2006 renewal by the city of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of paying litigation costs and renewing notes previously issued for the purpose and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5006.
Second.
As the title explains, this is a renewal of some bonds that we renewed. This will be the ninth time, ninth annual time, I guess. Our balance at this point is 500,000. We're gonna pay down 65,000, which includes some interest and other payments. We have instituted a $1 a month charge on garbage rates, which goes directly to pay for this, so hopefully next year, we will have more like 90,000, maybe 100,000 that we can pay down on this debt. It's a continuing process.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 50? All those, member Wild?
So, if I'm reading correctly, the interest rate's 3.55. Is that what I'm reading, section two?
You see the auditor shaking her head? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Other comments? Don't you wish you could get that interest? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5006?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Now to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 5106, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V, Public Utilities, Section 5.03, Water Regulations, Section 5.03.01, Responsibility of Property Owner. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I have a question for Councilmember Bane. As I was reading through these things, and I know we discussed this a fair amount at the last meeting and talked about that it might indeed end up amended. the last meeting and talked about that it might indeed end up amended, but my, what occurred to me is we're talking about water and the water is only one part of our utility bill. So would the water be separated out on a bill or does it apply to all utilities?
One other time.
Go ahead.
Member Wild.
Okay, the way I'm reading it here, it says all contracts for water-related utility services. So I assume that means garbage and sewer.
So we're talking all of it would go?
One bill.
Okay.
And the EPA fee too.
Right.
And you're a little doggy too.
Trash too? Yep. So we're truly not just talking about water, we're talking about the whole utility bill.
In answer to your question, 50301 reads, actually reads the way it's stated here and I think we're just amending that part because the water meter is the one that governs the other charges, like sewer charges follow from it and that's the utility bill for water and related utility services. And the people, and the suggestion was by the people enforcing it, so I'm assuming it's going to be okay, but I hope, I hope...
No, I just wanted that.
No, no, I understand.
Because we had talked about water and I wanted everyone to...
And we can make sure that minutes of our council meeting show the intention there. Other comments? Ordinance 5206, an ordinance vacating a 10-foot alley to the abutting property owner on Columbia Ordinance 5306, an ordinance amending ordinance O 13403, fringe benefit package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens. Ordinance 5506, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase two trucks for the street partner. Ordinance 5606, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contact for street paving, curbs, and sidewalks on Union Street between Schaefer and Jefferson, project number 224. Ordinance 5706, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street and Washington Street on Saturday, June 24th, and Friday, June 28th, and August 18th, 2006, for a cruise. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 5906, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Parks and Recreation for ownership of Stroud's Run Park. Member Patterson.
Mr. Preston, I move to amend 5906. The amendment that I'm suggesting is that the last whereas, which is the state will issue the city the deeds, be moved to number one after the now therefore reflecting its importance. So it's no change in wording, it's just moving that from whereas to number one. That would be in the agreement, I'm sorry.
Certainly not in 5906 or anything.
The second page of the agreement with ODNR, moving from the whereas to number one after the now therefore.
The first whereas or number one after now therefore?
The last whereas, which refers to the deeds.
Got it.
Becomes the number, or the number one after now therefore.
Okay, and then number two and everything else moves down one?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 5906 as stated. Is there further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment as stated?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Mr. President, this is the ordinance, two ordinances actually, the next one will be the next on the agenda, but the first ordinance is authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ODNR, Division of Parks and Recreation, for the ownership of Stroud's Run Park. So this is really the meat of the agreement. We greatly simplified this ordinance and basically just put the authorization of the mayor, section two is the financial statement, and if you'll notice in the information that the finance exhibit A has been included as an exhibit to go with it. Then section three is just directing the auditor what to do with the money and section four is the date of November 1st. Then along with it is the agreement with ODNR and the mayor has been in communication with ODNR today. It appears that there won't be any problems with any of the changes that we have made at this point. I also wanted to ask the law director, on the third page of the agreement, is that in or out? The very end of the agreement that's in black.
The number eight? It's in.
It's in, okay.
I bolded it and Debbie highlighted in yellow when it copied yours.
Well, the only, right, I understood that. The only reason I wondered is because it really is reflected in the, the same ideas reflected in the maintenance agreement, but that's fine. So if you glance through, the things that are blacked out are really highlighted and those are the changes. There's a typo in the second page of the agreement. It says rights to said area, the A is missing. The highlighted. And I think there's an I on including. Hard to see.
There he is.
Okay. Oh, it's real estate. Oh, it's not area, okay, sorry. So there, you can't see the L. There's an L on the end. I can't see the L.
Minutes to reflect, recognize it as a typo.
Area, yeah, sorry. Okay, the boats are in, there's no problem with that. And then there's this paragraph at the end just acknowledging the need for continued assistance. And that's basically it for the first ordinance. Questions and or comments from council?
The operating budget was changed to, to $90,000.
Right. The operating, the financial language was changed from the version that you previously saw to reflect the budget that the mayor offered to us. So it's 49.5 from ODNR, 49.5 from the city, for a total first-year operation budget of $99,000.
You might mention too, Carol, we included the mineral rights to the extent that the state owns.
Right, mineral rights come in.
It's on that one you were having a hard time reading. The number one you moved, the whereas you moved to number one.
Right, the mineral rights are included in that first number one of the actual agreement.
Have you changed the use of that money from ODNR then? You just said that the 49.5 would be part of the first year's operating budget?
Actually, I did just say that, didn't I? And we've talked about it going into the endowment. Gary, does that, the way that it's stated, does it mean that we have to use it for operating the first year?
Yes, that's the way I wrote it. You don't want it, you don't want it? That was the way it came to me from, the agreement came indicating that it was from the state saying they're going to provide it for the first year assistance.
But yet they did say that it was fine with them if we put that in the endowment. But the way it's written, are we not able to put it into the endowment?
Yeah, I would have to change it.
And that was our intention from the beginning and ODNR did understand that.
Okay, we've got a, we've amended, we've got a motion and a sec, or we've introduced ordinance 5906. Let's manage our comments to the chair here. Debbie, you had a question.
Well, I was, it seemed like in the committee meeting, we had a discussion about how to simplify that language.
Right.
About accepting the money and not saying operations. I was just going to look back through my notes, but I think we did have a, we had talked about a way to describe that.
Well, actually, what we talked about doing is just taking off the highlighted part and just leaving it, that we were going to accept the 49.5 for one-time operational assistance fund. It does not say to be used in '07 until we added the language saying that we were only going to add 49.5 to that because that was the way it was written. Gary, would you have any objection to us just deleting that? And mayor? I mean, we did talk about that at one time, just deleting that language that's highlighted on page one of the agreement.
Is that a motion?
No, it's a discussion.
Okay, well, it's not a committee meeting.
Mr. Chair, if you allow me to read something, I think this might be what council wants or addresses. You can do a motion to amend it to say, whereas the city requests fiscal assistance from the Department, Division of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $49,500 for a one-time operating assistance fund, period. New sentence, the city agrees to appropriate $49,500 of city funds as the city's share of the 2007 operating budget.
Is that what the chair, committee chair wishes? Member Patterson.
While we're certainly not appropriating at this point...
No, I said the city agrees to appropriate $49,500, which means you would have to at some point appropriate at least $49,500 since you're going to have an operating budget of $99,000. That should not be a problem to appropriate at least $49,000.
Mayor, do you think that solves it for you?
No, I think their original language just had a statement in there that they wanted to have so that they could see what the overall total budget, because the next whereas really says we can go out and partner with, and we'll go out and try to seek other places to do it. That's why I'm sure I want to say we'll appropriate, guarantee 49.5 because if we get other partners or revenue from it, we may not appropriate that much money of actual city funds.
Well, we would have to. I'm assuming if somebody makes a donation, it's going to be a donation to the city and then we would appropriate the money. It's got to run through the city's books in some way.
That's true.
I move for an amendment as stated by the law director.
Other, do we have a second?
Second.
Further comments on the amendment only? And if anybody is confused, I would have the law director read it again.
Read it again. I'm confused. Well, you have, you have the agreement in front of you?
Yes.
Yes, section two? Right, no, it's, no, it's the last whereas. The last whereas on the first page. Whereas the city requests fiscal assistance from the Division of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $49,500 for one-time operational assistance fund, period. New sentence, the city agrees to appropriate $49,500 of city funds as the city's share of the 2007 operating budget.
We have a motion and a second to amend O 5906 as read by the law director. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, member Bishop.
I agree with what we're saying that we want to do, and this is just a question, that putting those two things, it seems to me, in the same paragraph implies that the first amount is for operations. That's all. But if you're sure that it doesn't, then that's fine. In other words, it's the same whereas, but I will, so it seems to me that it implies operations, but if you're sure that it implies, if fund is clear, I might make two whereas. It's up to you.
Your point is well taken. Other comments? All those in, on the amendment only? Yeah, we'll, we'll get to it. That's a promise. Member Phillips, did I see your hand on that? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment as read?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
A show of hands, all those in favor of the amendment? Or those opposed? Member Bishop, you have to vote one way or another. Well, I'm certain it is. That's why I asked for him to read it twice. We have four votes to pass the amendment.
Right, right, right.
So the amendment passes. Okay. Now to the ordinance itself. Member Patterson, would you wish to speak more to the amendment, or to the ordinance itself?
To anything.
Other comments on the ordinance? Member Phillips?
I have a question about all the language that was in front of us in committee last week about not cutting trees and not harvesting plants and...
It is currently resting in ordinance two in the agreement with Division of Wildlife.
The Quokk Agreement for Management.
Right. We felt that was, defined it better.
Where it needed to land. Member Wild.
Firstly, who approached to for acquiring Stroud's Run? I just want to know this. I'm kind of confused where the history of this lies.
I ask them.
You ask them?
Yeah.
Okay, just wondering.
Member Bain?
I have a small question and a bigger one. According to six in the agreement between us and, between the city and ODNR, it talks about things that are currently ongoing.
Now seven.
Yeah, well, all recreational opportunities available by special permit, as the term is applied within the Division of Parks and Recreation, may be controlled or eliminated by the cities, by the city. These recreational opportunities are not usually, are usually not currently allowed by rule or regulation and are exceptions to normal operation. On this one, on the state agreement?
Right.
Examples of, but not limited to, these recreational opportunities available by special permit are the performance of marriages, fishing tournaments, special water events, sales by private vendors, and so forth. Does that mean that we're going to continue their permitting process and charge or what does it mean? I can't, I was trying to get my mind around it because this is new for me. That's my first question. I want to know. So if, for example, the crew team wants to have a, an event on the lake, are they allowed to do it and will we be charging money?
That's my understanding, that we would do any, we could hold a trout derby, we could, you know...
We manage it.
Yes.
And so that would mean, because I remember Doc Franklin saying, well, you could get $250 for permitting the, let's say, the crew team event. And that was one that stuck in my mind.
Nancy, I think the language, the second, third line down from the top, it makes it clear that all those activities are either controlled or eliminated by the city. So I think they're saying we can do what we want, whether we continue or terminate.
But the special permit ones were the ones that I was concerned about, you know, so you can go out there and hike and hunting is, is controlled by someone else, but this is a separate, you know, like if I want to get married.
You are me.
I'm, I'm not, okay. All right, so, but I'm interested in number one, and this is certainly an important one. If after one year, the city or state wishes to exercise an option to return responsibilities and ownership of Stroud's Run to the state, both parties agree to return, anyway, there's some additional language in there, but that means we have only one year, is that correct?
That is correct. And the answer to that is if we wanted to work on giving it back after that time, it would have to be renegotiated. And that was what... And that was what the gentleman from ODNR said when he was here. And it is partly because it will be a new administration, be a whole different ballgame, but that this was written that at the end of one year, if it just didn't seem like it was a workable thing, that we could pull out of the agreement. But there is no guarantee after that of what arrangements might be made if we wanted to renew.
Well, the reason why I'm asking that question is because that seemed like it was a fairly important point last time. And I know people say, I think the mayor said that it would be easy to, I mean, we're the obvious ones to give it back, but I guess I don't know what it means in terms of having only one year, and I hate to, you know? What does renegotiated mean?
Nancy, I think that language was put in by the state.
Yeah.
And they're obviously meaning one year, but I would point out to you that the deed has a reversion language in it, that if we ever cease to use it in perpetuity for recreational purposes, it automatically reverts back to the state. I.e., big loophole, if you don't want the property, declare you're not gonna use it for recreational purposes, and it will automatically forfeit back to the state, whether they like it or not.
But, you know, I'm sorry, Gary. At the end of the second year, let's say, when we finally are on a road and we're trying to see if that $100,000 will cover our costs, and the 50, we're putting 50 potentially of our own up for it, or of tax money, then, or we're collecting fees enough to subsidize it, but if we find that we don't make those, those goals about having money in a fund, will we have to pay a penalty to give it back to them? Is that correct? You're sure, pretty sure? I mean, I heard Carol say...
You don't ask me, you're certain whether there are guarantees. Yeah, I would say I'm reasonably certain that you would not be paying a penalty, simply because my advice to you would be, declare you're not gonna use it for recreational purposes, and the deed there would be a forfeiture of it back to the state.
Okay.
Have a developer come talk to us.
Oh, good.
And the language doesn't, you know, doesn't provide for any kind of forfeiture penalty.
Okay. Why couldn't we ask for more than one year on this? Because we really don't know what it will be on our own, because we're having university subsidy for half and the state for half, basically, the first year. And it seems like one year isn't really enough time to get in. I mean, it makes me really pleased, other than the fact that, I mean, the whole thing has some issues, as I've stated before, but I just wonder why one year, since it's subsidized? All right, well, that's out there. Anybody wants to comment on it?
Other comments?
I just...
Member Bishop?
I just wanted to make sure I understood this, the recreational opportunities. So if I understand this correctly, in six, it says all recreational opportunities available at the date of the signing will remain even after we annex it. So whatever activities are currently acceptable or allowed out there, we must continue. And it's only those that have special permits that we can discontinue if we choose to. So whatever is currently allowed, we are agreeing to continue to allow that in perpetuity. Right?
Right.
That is correct.
Other comments? Are there any other comments by council members? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this? Please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. Mr. Cantino?
Phil Cantino, 33 Cable Lane. The protective language that we were talking about last time, the logging, no RVs, and so on, I had asked last time whether the ordinance or the agreement with the Division of Parks had the greatest protective value. I find now it's been put in the cooperative agreement with the Division of Wildlife, which looks to me the weakest, the easiest to change of the three.
The agreements, my understanding from the law director and the mayor in many discussions, the agreements are stronger than our ordinance.
Well, the agreement with the Division of Wildlife, item 10, simply says that the terms of this agreement will be continuous unless at such time the Division and Athens will review and renegotiate this agreement. However, the conditions of this agreement are subject to revision as needed by mutual consent of our parties. Wouldn't it be possible for the Parks Department of the city in the future to decide, for example, that they want to permit off-road vehicles in the park, and the city could simply ask the Division of Wildlife to renegotiate that point? Would it even take a decision by city council to do that?
It would be possible for future administrations to unagree, to give it back.
Isn't that pretty much always the case, though?
Right, right. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, with every ordinance that we pass, the future councils can change things. I know we passed an ordinance many years ago stating that we will have brick streets in certain areas. Even though I love and adore that ordinance, at any time, a future council can decide to change that.
But the agreement with the Division of Parks for the transfer of the property looks, I would think that would be the strongest, because, you know, if someone wanted to take this to court at some point, they could say, look, in the very agreement that this was transferred from the state, let me read one part of this as an example. I can find it quickly here. That the city agrees that it shall not transfer lease or in any way assign the interest in Stroud Run Park or the real estate to anyone other than the state in perpetuum. That, that sounds really strong to me. And I had hoped that there would be similar strength to the agreement not to log the forest, not to allow ORV use, and so on. I mean, that's where we really envisioned that language going, to give maximum protection.
I'll ask the law director to comment.
You know, I deem, both of them are contracts, Cantino, and both of them, as far as I'm concerned, are legal documents that are enforceable in court. I felt the language that you're talking about belongs in the management document, not the agreement in question.
Well, I have to say, it's a real concern. It is for me. I suspect it will be for others who, you know, our support for this whole thing to start with really came from wanting to protect the forest there, you know, for our grandchildren. And I'm really kinda concerned about this being in the cooperative agreement with the Division of Wildlife that perhaps could even be changed without city council.
I don't, it can't be changed without city council. That's not, that's a misstatement on your part. The agreement is authorized by city council, it's attached to an ordinance and incorporated into the ordinance, and therefore a part of the legislation of the city. To change it, you would have to go back to city council and do a new ordinance.
Okay. So it's at least as strong as the ordinance?
It's attached to the ordinance.
It's incorporated into the ordinance, the language of the ordinance, yeah, part of the ordinance.
What are you talking about, sixty or sixteen?
Oh, we're on the other, the other ordinance right now.
But they're part of the same clause. So, make sure the minute records show that this has the force, the attachment has the force of an ordinance?
Oh, it does, because they're incorporated...
Well, I know, but I said let the minute show that, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantino. Others wishing to speak? John?
John House, 13206 Dutch Creek Road. Yeah, I just wanna point out that the second whereas in this ordinance repeats the vision statement of the Stroud Run Task Force, but the formatting kind of makes it a little odd. And I would just ask that this be, that there be an amendment to make this read properly, something like, whereas the city has a vision of a healthy lake surrounded by unparalleled beauty, et cetera, or whatever would work there. Because this is clearly a vision statement, not entirely a statement of current conditions, since...
Which whereas are you talking about?
The second whereas under 05906, right.
The ordinance itself.
Right.
John, that language was given to me, and I just simply incorporated it in. So, you know, we're giving the ordinance its first reading, so I would have to have your suggestion for what you're wanting, how you're wanting it amended.
Right. Well, if you simply use language, something like, whereas the city has a vision of a healthy lake surrounded by unparalleled beauty from the flourishing natural landscape of old and new growth forests, and that Stroud Run Park can continue to provide a setting, et cetera, that would do it.
Do we wish to make a motion to amend?
Well, I will move to amend, to read, whereas the city has envisioned a healthy lake surrounded by, onward to, Stroud Run Park can provide a setting, can continue, can...
Continue.
Continue to provide a setting.
That would be, that would do it, yes.
Is there a second?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this amendment only?
Yes, before we vote, could you please...
Member Flowers?
Could you please read the whole?
Okay. Whereas the city has envisioned a healthy lake surrounded by unparalleled beauty from flourishing natural landscape of old and new growth forests, Stroud's Run Park can continue to provide a setting which enhances the education and recreational growth of the citizens of Southeast Ohio and beyond, and the Associated Nature Center and recreational venues facilitate the transfer of knowledge and provide a venue for the development and appreciation for the importance of discovery and the healthy use of leisure.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Is it has a vision of or envisions? Is it has a vision of or envisions?
Well, I think envisions works very well.
Other comments?
That word's smithing down.
Member Wild? No, that wasn't a hand, that was a comment. No one else. All those in favor of the amendment as read?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been amended. Is there further comments on the ordinance? Other members of the audience, please. You could give us your name, address, or affiliation.
I'm Ron Brooks. I'm with the Patrol Order Police. I'm the Ohio Labor Council representative that represents the patrol officers for the police department, our post office, Box 399, Athens, and all that stuff.
Your affiliation will do, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have a couple of questions first, and then, I actually have three questions.
Ron, before you start with questions, I do have to let you know that council has stated in its rules and chastises me every time somebody comes to the podium that while you can ask questions, they will not be answered.
Okay.
Because many times, people ask us such, have you quit beating your wife type questions that there are just no good answers to, nor do we...
I'll throw them out for future reference, I guess.
And that would be great, and your comments will be well-taken in that regard, but I do want you to understand why council does not take questions from the podium, just so you understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, the two things I had questions about, I guess, for maybe this is for the future, you were just talking about permits, selling permits for people to use the lake for various, the crew team or whatever. The lake's not that big. Does that mean if you're going to sell permits for someone to use the lake, then it is exclusively for their use for that period of time, and nobody else, you know, no other boats are gonna be allowed on the lake?
It could be.
You know, I'm sure that people in Southeast Ohio aren't gonna really appreciate that if they want to pack up their boat and go fishing, and they get there and can't, can't fish, you know? The other question I had was, what happens if the city doesn't take over Stroud Run? Is the state gonna dig it up and move it someplace else, and there's gonna be this big empty hole there that is nothing anymore? Or is it gonna go to private use? Or what? I would be interested to know that. The comments that I have are, and I'll ask Mr. Byas...
You can address everything to me.
Well...
The rules provide for that.
I've got a lot of stuff here that I wanna discuss about the Stroud's Run. Obviously, I'm not in favor of it, but I have some other issues that go along with that. My main concern is staffing levels for the police department, as you can probably imagine. So I guess I will ask you, do you want me to go ahead and discuss this, or say these things now?
Sir, you have three minutes to make your point, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm not against Stroud's Run. I'm not against Arts West. I'm not against hiring a city planner. I'm not against hiring a coordinator for Arts West. I'm not against hiring someone to promote the city rec department, you know? I'm not against any of these things, but the timing of them seems to be poor at best. When we can't get police officers hired and firefighters hired for the city, and I'll give city the credit, they have hired two officers in the past few months. They've hired, my understanding is they're getting ready to hire another one. But even if we hire those three people, we're still several officers short from where we were just a few years ago. Don't have the money to hire them, can't hire them. City put on a hiring freeze a few years ago, said we don't have any money, can't hire anybody. But at the same time, we hired city planners, we hired coordinators for Arts West, we purchased Arts West, we built a fountain on East State Street. I know, all those monies come from other places, but the point is, we can always find money for everything we wanna do, except hire police officers and firefighters. Stroud's Run, if we take it over, it becomes city property. Is that not correct? It's going to be city property. The city's gonna provide services out there for the rec department. My understanding is, I know somebody that lives in that area that came across a delivery truck two or three months ago, delivering a large load of lumber, which said, City of Athens, Recreation Department, Stroud's Run. So apparently, the city's already pumping money into the place, and it looks like the city ordinance that we're trying to pass here, that you guys are trying to get through, is a mere formality, because it's already taken place. My friend told me, he saw the bill of lading, the guy showed it to him, the guy stopped him and said, hey, I'm looking for this place to deliver this lumber. He said, here's the address, it said, City of Athens, Rec Department, Stroud's Run State Park. So I guess I got a question about that, obviously. But we can find ways to fund everything we want in the city, but we can't seem to find the money to fund police officers. If we hire these three people, we're still five or six officers short from what we were a few years ago. City wants to annex University Estates, a big new project out on Armitage Road. That's gonna, that's gonna increase the size of the city by roughly a third of the size of the city right now. So we're gonna increase the size of the city by a third. We're not planning on hiring any, any officers. I've been told by the city administration that we're not gonna provide officers to patrol Stroud's Run. We're gonna let the sheriff's department take care of it. Well, why would the sheriff's department, whose same position we're in, understaffed and overworked, why would they wanna take on 2,500 extra acres when they got 580 square miles of county to worry about? You know, the city's gonna maintain it, the city's gonna provide other services, they should have to provide police and fire protection. But in order to do that, you're gonna have to hire police and firefighters. You know, if they're gonna hire someone, a park manager, I mean, this is what I've been told recently, park manager, and maybe as many as four or five other full-time employees to run the park. Okay, fine. Who's gonna provide the police protection? Sheriff's Department. I'm sure they're gonna be thrilled about that. Deputies are just gonna be hopping up and down, can't wait to get out there and answer calls to Stroud's Run when it's city property. The fire department doesn't have any, you know, they need to be, have some firefighters hired. Then we come up with a sales tax or a tax increase that I read in the paper not long ago, a week or so ago. We're gonna, only way we can hire firefighters and police officers, tax increase.
Ron, I need to ask you to wrap.
Okay.
Your time's running.
Well, the tax increase, obviously, I'm not in favor of either. Tax increase proposed to hire six city positions, only two of which are gonna be police officers. Maybe the other two others are gonna be firefighters. Who are the other ones gonna be? The park manager for Stroud's Run? So we're increasing taxes, and I'm just guessing, I don't know, that that's what the position was gonna be for, but we can't seem to find money to shore up our basic needs of the city, but we can find ways to provide, to buy Arts West, hire somebody to run it, hire a city planner, take over Stroud's Run, hire a park manager. We got money to do all that, but no money to hire police officers and firefighters to protect the place, serve the citizens, you know? And if we do, we gotta raise taxes. Why is that? I'm just, I'm against, I'm not against Stroud's Run. I grew up at Stroud's Run. My father took me fishing there and hunting there my whole life. And I want it to stay, but I don't think it's just gonna disappear overnight if the city decides they're not gonna take it over.
Thanks, Ron, for your comments. Other comments for... Other comments for city council? Christine?
Christine Nysley, 15 Old Coach Road in Athens, and I too enjoy Stroud's Run, and I feel, I guess, a sense of conflict, and I'll raise the issue also, I've been out at Stroud's Run, when people are doing things, it's an obvious violation of the park rules, and disturbing other people's presence and enjoyment of the park, and when a manager's called, a ranger's been called in the past, they said, "Well, they're out at Forked Run", and it'll be 25 minutes before, you know, there's any kind of enforcement. So I know that's an enjoyment issue, but I guess the other question would be then of a liability issue, and maybe a long-term management issue, what will happen if there are people out there, and it's the city's responsibility, and the sheriff's department is overworked and overrun, and it's a busy night, and they can't respond in time to what's an emergency situation out at the park? I just think that's going to be a huge long-term management question. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? John will allow one minute comment.
Okay, well, this is not really quite apropos, but the load of lumber is funded by an Athens foundation grant, the city recreation department assisted with transportation, but this is, work is being done entirely by volunteers and funded through non-governmental money,
I am unaware of any money that could have been appropriated, so any city money that's being spent out there would be a problem. Any other comments for council? Member Bishop?
May I ask a question? I'm just wondering about-
You just did.
I know.
You just did.
Now I have another one. This insurance allocation here, $2,000 a year- In the budget? The budget for the park, because I know, people have mentioned to me, you know, if there were an emergency, or if there were an accident and somebody got injured, you know, I guess, I guess I'm wondering how much this covers, so if there were an accident at the park, and the city, you know, had to-
Mayor, would you care to address liability issues?
The general liability limits of the city, the agent quote is verbally $1,800 to $2,000. I've asked for a written quote, he wants to include in that the structures such as the house, it has not come in yet, as soon as we have the actual quote, we'll give it to you. It's like when we added the skate park, it was under $1,000 to do the liability coverage.
Like personal injury and all those things?
Well, a lot of things you do at your own risk, I mean, if you're walking on the trail and fall, I mean, it's very difficult to say that we have to pay the medical bills of the city for that, because there is an immunity under state law to governmental activities and functions. You have to be, Gary, you know the right words, but I mean, there's-
You have to be engaged in proprietary function that is non-governmental in nature, and most of the activity that would go on, in my opinion, at Stroud's Run Park would be governmental activity, and probably would be immunity.
You mean, if you're on government property?
No, I don't necessarily mean if you're on government, there's certain things that occur on government property do in fact cause us to have liability, operation of streets and maintaining streets and those kinds of things, but generally, recreation lands are not something that we have a great deal of liability for. Something like the skate park would be something that's more of a gray area, and that's why we carry insurance for it. Running the recreation complex that we run has more issues with it, and that's why we carry liability insurance. Running a wilderness park like Stroud's Run, in my opinion, does not have a great deal of liability issues.
So this doesn't cover liability, or does?
I don't know, you're looking at a budget item I've never seen, I'm assuming we're attaching it to our existing liability policy.
Other comments? See, no other comments, ordinance 6006, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife, for the management of Stroud's Run Park, again, Member Patterson.
Mr. President, this is the sibling ordinance concerning Stroud's Run, and this is to enter into a management agreement with the Division of Wildlife. The only addition to what you saw previously was that the effective date of November 1st, 2006, was entered, and the details of the management agreement, number six through 10, were added, six through nine were suggestions from the Athens Conservancy and Phil Cantino, and number 10 was courtesy of the law director.
Other comments on ordinance 60? Member Bain?
Six through, six, seven, and eight in this, intends to, that's kind of weasel language, can we just say will prohibit? Will prohibit? Will prohibit? Will prohibit? Instead of intends to.
Are you offering an amendment?
No, I'm suggesting that that would be in the nature, no, you can make the amendment, but I just think in our last discussion, it was much more, not so wiggly as this language is.
Why don't you offer that in form of amendment?
Does that mean I buy into it?
Not necessarily.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the cooperative agreement between the City of Athens, Ohio, and the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife, specifically six, seven, and eight, under, on page two-
And nine.
Nine, yes, thank you, and instead of intends to in each case, will or shall-
Intends to with will in those four cases.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion on the amendment as offered only?
I appreciate the amendment, I think it is stronger, and that's good suggestion.
All those, member Wile?
Go ahead, sir.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Member Phillips?
I would note a typo in number six, that we're prohibiting extraction of coal rather than cola.
No, we want to stop any coal mining. We will have our minutes reflect that that is a typo, which I've been told in the past by the law director that we are able to do. Other comments? On ordinance 60? Any comments from anyone in the audience on ordinance 60? Oh, 6106, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Washington to State Street on Saturday, July 22nd, 2006, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks, and suspending the enforcement of the Athens City Code Title VII, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.26B, 1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, this is an ordinance to close down Court Street for the family musical festival, as you stated, the Boogie on the Bricks, which is the second annual, they had it last year, and while I was unable to attend, I heard that it was a great event, saw many pictures from it, and something that can get the community involved, so.
Other comments on ordinance 61? Ordinance 6206, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03 Rental Dwelling and Housing Permit, Section 29.03.07 Expirations and Renewals. Member Bain?
Mr. President, oh, 6206 is, represents an effort on the part of council to receive a more timely payment of rental fees, and the charges assessed, $20 for a late fee, which will be roughly 20% of the fee, for each dwelling rooming house permit fee unpaid on March 1st. We have our obligations, and the city would like to have the money for the year, right up front, and we had a substantial number of late fees, and possibly you could make money if you had a large number of them, leaving the money in a, in a, not a timeshare, but a-
CD.
CD, thank you. So it's your responsibility, it's my responsibility as a landlord, a small-scale one, but a landlord, all the same, to pay it by March 1st, it's not a hardship, and I think we should support this effort. There was an addition that many people wanted, and I would like to carry this one forward, just so I can have some more discussions in the paper with the head of the landlord association later times, thank you very much.
Other comments on ordinance 6206? Member Phillips?
I would just add that that, the amount of that fee is based on what the code office has told us, they expend in terms of time and letters sent to try to collect fees that haven't been paid on time.
Thank you very much.
Other comments? See, no, I'm sorry, member Wile?
What's entailed in trying to get the fees are various letters, and finally turning it over to the law director's office. What I'd like to see in terms of some of this, if this is one of the causes for not a renewal, for refusing a renewal of a permit for the following year, if we don't get collections and timely maintenance after a certain point, I think we'd want to revisit that, mostly because I think that's one of the ways of getting attention of some of the landlords.
New coming attractions.
Coming attractions.
Reviews of coming attractions. Other comments? Okay, am I down to 63? Oh, 6306, an ordinance amending ordinance oh, 10105, authorizing funds for engineering of a water line and pump station for the Columbus Road Water Project, number 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, last meeting, the mayor talked about this particular project, and there's some grant money attached, associated with this, we will, you can see in section two, we'll be expending up to $85,000, but actually, the funding of the project and the improvement of the line, as well as the sewer line on Columbus Road, will be funded in part with the pump station, at least, from grant money, which is always good. And this is part of an upgrade in an area where the water line has been an issue, and so we're going to correct it at the same time as we correct the other sewer line issues.
Other comments? Ordinance 6406, an ordinance authorizing construction of the Columbus Road Water Line Project Number 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, it's too bad we didn't have a small amount of money we were arguing over, because we can see in section two, that this water line project will cost $663,000, and as I said, part of it is, part of, at least, the total cost in pump station will be funded by a grant, project 218. You can see the mounts, Columbus Road Water Line, earlier there was a different plan, but this one is a better one, will keep all three lanes of Columbus Road open, that's the top of the hill, in my mind, that's a good approach.
You know how to spend attention, member Bain?
No, not as much as-
Wasn't it you at the first of the year who was giving me flack for stealing money?
Yeah, well, okay.
And if you didn't think that was enough, ordinance 6506, an ordinance authorizing construction of a gravity sewer lift station and force main for the Columbus Road Sewer Project, again, number 218. Member Bain?
Mr. President, we're starting down the process of upgrading the sewer line on Columbus Road, we're going to move it up the hill and across and down Third Street and into the line. The amount will be $751,000, and much of that, a good part of that will be paid by FEMA, because the sewer that was on the ground was destroyed by the floods of January 2005. And I am especially happy that my, our friend Andy had some part in that, I appreciate the work he did in getting FEMA out, walking them up and down the River Scar, we appreciate his work, and hope he hurries back from Iraq safely.
Actually, Nancy, you're a little bit low on the amount.
Oh, yeah, I know, I looked at 751, and yeah, but look at the difference between those two, if we had to pay a million, oh, God, I mean, our amount, we're going to front it.
One more time, on a project of 856,000, we have grant money of 751. So we're very lucky there.
We're very lucky there, and I'd like to thank the administration, especially Andy Stone, for his help on this, $105,000 for a totally new sewer line, wow, what a good deal. All right.
Other comments on ordinance 65? Yes, Member Patterson?
I just would like to add that it's great to see this one moving forward, it was pretty scary when all of that first happened, and to see the other end of it now is good news.
Good news.
Remember a day that the mayor and I and the service safety director hiked through the woods and briars to see a very large pit of raw sewage very close to the river, and wondering how we were going to make it all go away, and not go in the river. I'm glad to see this is moving forward. Ordinance 6606, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance and the 2006 interfund transfer ordinance, and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, earlier I said that the ordinance we just passed completed the work on the interfund transfer ordinance, but that was a preliminary word, we'll revisit it frequently. This is a revisit also. There are two activities in this ordinance that would be funded approximately $12,500 to the underage drinkers fund, and then from that to the drug court fund. This is for the municipal court to take advantage of a grant for rehabilitation of drivers who were drinking, however, this $12,500 has to be paid upfront, and then they qualify for the grant. There's also a $19,000 transfer, which will pay for some additional well monitoring that the mayor talked about in our last committee meeting, the EPA is mandating that we continue some monitoring at our wells down on West State Street. I was-
Are we in need of suspension?
We're not, tonight.
Nobody looks panicky tonight, so-
Not on the Internal Service Fund, but the same as council got a letter from Judge Grimm, the 16th, that says, he asks, please approve under suspension of the rules, so judges have that.
Recent conversations were that it didn't need suspended tonight.
Well, we'll wait till she's made- Been informed by the clerk, because she spoke with the court, and it does not need suspended. Are there any other comments on ordinance 66? Announcements and other business? Committee meeting? CMD?
City Services.
City Services?
Liquor transfer and the other things that I'll remember. Send you an email.
Patterson, Member Patterson, I'm sorry.
Well, under the city services, the continued discussion of Halloween.
Sure.
But also, I need arts and recreation on a possible change in the August art market, and while I have your attention, I have a couple of announcements, and I don't know details, and maybe someone else does, but tomorrow night, there is a meeting concerning the construction of Pomeroy Road at the Richland Avenue Church.
Yep, 7:00 p.m.
And then the following night, on Wednesday, the 17th, and I do not know a time, at the library, is a meeting to talk about bus routes. It's not a meeting that has been organized by the city, it is a citizen that's put it together, and I will get from her the exact time and email council about it, but it's at the library on Wednesday evening, just a citizen's input to talk about routes.
Member Flowers?
We'll have a transportation committee meeting miscellaneous for right now.
Okay.
Finance, may come on.
The ever-present finance, and Member Bishop?
Yeah, actually, we're going to have the next conversation with council Monday night on follow-up on Halloween, and if you're ready for some levity, I have, a student came up to me today and said that he got home at 1:30 in the morning, and his roommates were like jumping up and down and saying, "Hooray, hooray," and he said, "What are you watching?" And he said, "The city council meeting." Well, actually, they were very, they were pro the whole idea of this, of, you know, maybe having a charge for Halloween and- maybe having a charge for Halloween and redirecting it, which I think is really pretty interesting. But anyway, we will have an open conversation, 6:00 next Monday, in the conference room downstairs, and I invite, and Carol invites, I'm sure, people who are interested in this topic to come and discuss it.
Make sure those students...
Member Flowers?
Thank you. Just in addition to that comment that you made about people being pro possibly charging for Halloween, I did talk to a lot of people as well, mainly students, and while they are in favor of some sort of fee, I think that if we can look at it being subsidized for the OU students, that they were certainly in favor of that charging for it.
No, no. I can imagine.
No, 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 not total. I mean, as far as like them having an OU ID and them paying less than some of the out-of-town people, but that was certainly what they were in favor of.
I don't want to discuss, but isn't it a bit like...
A wonderful comment for next week's conversation with council. Member Wile? No, anybody else? No other committee meetings? I think that's all of them, one, two, three, four, five committees. Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items, legislative items, and city services not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would wish to speak before council tonight? Christine Nysley?
Chris Nysley, 15 Old Coach Road. And I'll be brief. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And what I'd like to talk about briefly is the establishing processes for the accountability of the comprehensive plan. And this statement is offered tonight on behalf of the executive committees of the Neighborhood and Community Associations. So those are the officers of Near East Side Neighborhood Association, the Area Near North Side Community Association, West Side Community Association, and South Side Community Association, and the officers. A little bit of background information, I'm sure you all are very familiar with it, but just to review it, Chapter 9 of the comprehensive plan deals with benchmarking and performance monitoring, and it notes the need to move toward a more measured and results-oriented approach to chart the progress towards planning the goals and the objectives. The plan further recommends that council, and this is a quote, "take up the issue of how best to assign the responsibility of developing, refining, or otherwise administering a benchmark program." And there's an additional quote, "that the city create a comprehensive plan management and accountability board to assist in the development of a performance measurement system." And this board could assist in making performance and outcome information available and accessible to citizens, encourage citizen participation, and facilitate continuous improvement throughout the public service. Chapter 13 of the comprehensive plan also addresses desired outcomes for coordination and accountability. A little bit of additional background information, in August 2003, the executive committees of the neighborhood associations submitted a resolution to the comprehensive plan steering committee. The resolution included an offer to serve as facilitators for the plan's accountability process. The committees proposed to host events that would perform the evaluation and accountability tasks during the implementation of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan steering committee at that time suggested that the proposal be addressed when it was time to implement the plan. Because the plan is now, we hope, close to being finalized and near to acceptance, the neighborhood association executive committees think that it's an appropriate time to begin to facilitate the establishment of the accountability process. Committee of representatives from each of the associations has volunteered to serve, and this committee would be willing to make recommendations about the processes that can be used to do one of three, or do three things. One would be to create additional applicable and measurable benchmarks and timelines for appraising successful implementation of the plan. A second item would be to determine how well the benchmarks are being met. And then the third item would be how the assessments will be presented to the citizens and how they in turn might suggest ways that benchmarks can be achieved if they're not being met. We appreciate your consideration of this proposal from the executive committees to serve in this portion of the implementation of the city comprehensive plan. And we'd also like to request, if we could, that this be placed on the agenda of the next Planning and Development Committee.
We'll see that that's added to next week's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nysley. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Milt Greek. I live on 17 Hanlon Avenue. This is just a short announcement. On Wednesday, May 24th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Arts West Center, there will be a joint neighborhood association's town meeting to identify the issues that most concern Athens residents. The associations will attempt to keep attention focused on issues relevant to the Athens community. The feedback provided during these forums will provide all city officials and candidates for city offices with valuable input concerning the expressed desires of the Athens residents. All city residents are being urged to attend this meeting whether or not they are members of the neighborhood association. I have copies for anyone who wants this, especially people in the media. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mike Capolo, 6985, Smith Run in Gloucester. I wanted to ask about this meeting that you're going to have on Halloween next Monday at 6:00. Usually you have this time limit of three minutes, and sometimes there are issues that are complicated, especially with Halloween. I have a copy of the OU post from 1971, October 17th. There is no mention of Halloween. Halloween did not exist until after the voting age was lowered from 21 to 18. Then it took off, not on this campus, not only on this campus, but other campuses, to the point that it's almost turned into almost like a state political election at times with major candidates showing up here because of the strong political element that's turning I think there's some other factors that need to be discussed here instead of just, you know, like who's going to pay for the cost? Who is actually benefiting from this? An event that's held on the weekend immediately preceding the first Tuesday of November, is it a political appetizer to draw people's attention to, you know, who to vote for in two days? This has been going on for 30, 30 years now, and it's worked effectively from what I see. I would like to ask that some of these...
Okay, well, I invite you to come next week, 6:00, because it is an opportunity to have a dialogue, which is very, this is not a forum.
Also remember that our three-minute time limit are for meetings of council when somebody's speaking from the forum or from the podium. At committee meetings, which is what we're discussing next week, we're a little bit more loose on that. It's more of a discussion where we allow a colloquy to develop. So we welcome you back next week.
I just imagine that this room will be packed next week, I think.
Don't stress.
Yeah, it's downstairs on the first floor.
It's a bigger room?
Yeah, and it's a facilitator. No, it's not a bigger room.
It's not going to be crowded anymore.
You know, after Terry Smith's comments in the Athens News today, I think you're going to have a crowd.
Okay, we'll see. It's okay, good.
Other comments for council? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.